Three, three, two, one, check, check, check. Testing one, two, three. So it's time to speak. If you would mind keeping your phones on mute. It'll make life a little bit easier and.
Laurie Andries. Laurie Anderson.
Okay, who's Laurie Andrade?
Laurie Andries.
Okay.
She's superintendent for Coventry.
Sorry, sir, I forgot about her. Thank you. All right, Mr. President, we do have everyone present and accounted for. It's six o'clock. If you would like to begin, you can begin.
I would. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. I would like to welcome everybody and I thank everybody for attending this meeting. I hope this meeting finds everybody in good health. With that being said, I'd ask the clerk to take a roll call, please.
Carrie McGee.
Yeah.
Greg LaBosse here.
Here.
Gary Cody.
Here.
Ian Dixon.
Here.
Deborah Bacon.
Here.
Nicholas Coram.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I ask that we all stand for Fudge of Allegiance, please, and I will leave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In two public. For which is. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, excuse the added noise of my dog, but I also want to make everybody aware that this meeting may be watched by the public live stream and it will be a public hearing this evening. The first item on the agenda will be item, we're going to go to item A three. Madam Clerk, would you read that for me, please?
Mr. President, I don't mean to interrupt, but would you want the school committee to do their roll call as well?
Okay, I didn't realize they were going to have that meeting, but they were sitting here, so yes, we will. Madam Chair, if you want to do your roll call for the school committee, I'm sorry about that, forgetting you.
That's perfectly fine, Mr. McGee. Yes, I would like to open our school committee meeting. I have 6:03 and could I have a roll call, please?
Catherine Patnold.
Here.
David Florio.
Present.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Colunian.
Here.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Lovett.
Here.
Laurie Andries.
Here.
Sarah Mangiarelli.
Here. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
The conference is now locked.
Mr. McGee, your backup, sir? I think you're muted.
I think I did mute my phone. I should ask, Madam Clerk, would you all please read A three?
Approval of Town Council Minutes, March 5th, 2020, March 9th, 2020, and March 20th, 2020.
Okay, we've all had copies of the minutes and before we ask for a vote, would there be, I'm going to give each council person an opportunity to ask any questions concerning the minutes. If there are none, we will entertain a motion. So, Mr. Vice President, do you have any comments or questions concerning the three minutes? I do not. Okay, Mrs. Dixon, would you have any?
I do not have any corrections or any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And how about Mr. Cody?
No, I'm all set, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, and Mrs. Bacon?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's get a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve, not LaBosse here.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Ian Dixon, I second the minutes.
And we have a second. Okay, take a roll call, vote, all in favor.
Carrie McGee.
Aye.
Greg LaBosse here.
Aye.
Deb Bacon.
Aye.
Ian Dixon.
Aye.
Gary Cody.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to. We will move on to item B one, which I would agree that is a public hearing. I think what we're going to do is start off with the school department's budget presentation. And then, as being, first of all, I guess we would have to explain a motion to open public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Gary Cody, I make a motion to open public hearing.
We have a.
Ian Dixon, I second the motion.
And we have a second. All in favor, roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Carrie McGee. Greg LaBosse here.
Aye.
Deb Bacon.
Aye.
Ian Dixon.
Aye.
Gary Cody.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start out, eyes out, thank you. We're going to start out with the school department, but, excuse me again, we're going to start out with the school department budget presentation. Mr. Lovett, I don't know if you or Sarah, the stop, applause yours, please.
Good, thank you. I'm going to make a few point first and then I will turn it over to Ms. Mangiarelli to do our presentation. But I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by just, you know, thanking this entire community. We know how, you know, I'm exhausted. I'm sure everybody is so exhausted dealing with COVID-19. But I need to thank our students, our parents, our caregivers for, you know, addressing this, dealing with this, what's been thrown at them. We have about 95% of our students are engaged every day and we're still working on those students that aren't. So I really need to thank them. I also want to thank, as I always do, the Public Works, the police, rec department, the Department of Human Services in Sedexo for helping with our grab and go meals. We serve between 400 and 500 youth, young adult, every single day, seven days a week, they receive meals. We do it Monday through Friday. And gratitude that's expressed to our community for providing this service just is amazing. And then finally, I need to thank our school community, all of our support staff, our clerks, our custodians, facilities, our teaching assistants, and most importantly, our educators who are working every single day, 100% to ensure that our students, their families, again, caregivers and community at large, there's nothing that they haven't been willing to do to support them. So, and I say this often, I've never been more proud. If I was to walk off the job today, I was so proud of saying that I'm superintendent of Coventry Public Schools. So I just wanted to say that. And I want to thank the school committee for their support of myself. You know, many of my colleagues have, you know, a lot of micromanaging going on and I'm very blessed to have the support of a school committee that allows me to provide the leadership, you know, and we're in constant communication, so I want to thank them. My second point is just about this process. I'm glad to hear that Zoom meetings will be put in place, but I was very concerned. I shared my concerns about tonight's process. You know, we need engagement with the community. We need the community to question our budget, to feel comfortable what we're putting forward or play devil's advocate. And I'm just concerned about the process tonight. So I shared that with the school committee chair, other school committee members. And we're going to be holding an open house on Tuesday night. We've already posted it as a school committee meeting through Zoom so that the community can answer questions, ask questions, we can go through the presentations. Our presentation and our budget are also posted on the main page of our website, Coventry Schools.net. It leads me into another point about this budget that we're sharing tonight. We've been very transparent with, you know, we've been working with the town manager, Mr. Arnett, who we wish a speedy recovery. Myself and Ms. Mangiarelli, we've been meeting since the fall on a weekly basis. We've been very transparent with the community, but with the town council leadership about our budget, about our needs. And I think that's important for the community to understand that we, like I said, we've had meetings since January where the town has presented that they were going to do a 0% budget. Mr. Wazika and I discussed this tonight, but I think it's important also to recognize that in our budget, we also follow the recommendations of you, Mr. McGee, in terms of what was discussed at the financial town meeting last year. We met in the fall about all the unions getting together or opening up their contract. We met with the union leadership, myself, Mr. Wazika, Mr. Arnett, Ms. Mangiarelli in the fall. We discussed opening the contracts. We actually met with Mr. McGee and Mr. Cody and discussed what our plan was. And we actually attacked with the union and we met with them, we were able to renegotiate a three-year contract which saves us next year a half million dollars. And I know it's not in this part of the meeting, but the following, you know, after this meeting, there's the CTA contract. And I'm very concerned about if that is voted down, what the ramifications are. So I just want to be clear that we did everything we were asked to do. Obviously, we understand COVID-19 and the impact having on families. An example, today, I was at the grab and go meal site and a woman disclosed to me, a parent disclosed to me with her children, that her husband just came home. He's a nurse and he'd been quarantined for four weeks. And so, we're experiencing this every day, the impact it has on our community. And so, we put forward a budget, like I said, tonight, we're putting forward a budget that we believe the school department needs to continue to meet the needs of our school community. And having said that, we also know that the plans, whatever the plans are to reopen in the fall, we're not properly staffed for that. I can tell you that. I don't know what it's going to look like, but they're saying smaller class sizes, having custodians, clean high-frequency areas such as doorknobs, door handles, bathrooms every hour. We have one custodian in our high school and one custodian in our middle school for three hours in the morning with 1,100 kids and almost 1,500 students. So, the budget we put forward is a budget that addresses our needs pre-COVID-19. And so, I just want to let the community understand that, that, you know, we recognize there's huge gaps in terms of revenue. But the final point I just want to make before I turn it over to Ms. Mangiarelli is that I'm kind of alarmed with the tone that I've heard in the last two town council meetings and that I know that the council has the final say, the council can make a recommendation on a budget and the community can vote that budget up or down. But what bothers me is that the school department, the school committee is elected by the community to put forward a budget. And I feel that the tone that I've heard in terms of that the school department will be making cuts has not respected the work that the school department, the school committee, our administrative team, our teacher leaders have done. And so, I'm hoping tonight that, and Tuesday night, the community will listen to our budget, ask any questions they want. And again, I think in good faith, we've done everything we've been asked to do. And we understand there's so many variables moving forward. We may have significant savings, but as I said to Mr. Wazika today, we also don't know what additional expenses are going to be. We don't know what kind of money we're going to be getting from the care act. We don't know what kind of additional funds are coming through the next stimulus package. So there's so many variables, but as superintendent and I think as the school committee, it's our responsibility to put forward a budget that we believe addresses the needs of this community. So those are my statements right now. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Mangiarelli to go through our presentation and we'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. The presentation I know is being presented on the YouTube video. It's also on our website, so you can pull it up there if you'd like to follow along if that's easier for you. As Mr. Lovett said, the very first slide that we have shows that this budget was developed prior to COVID. So this budget was developed with an emphasis on social emotional learning, continued promotion of vision of the graduate, improvement in math, writing and reading K to 12, increasing test scores, inclusion of all students, and equitable access of supplies and equipment among the schools. On the next slide, we have anticipated additional costs associated with the COVID-19 response. One of the things that we're struggling with right now is we don't know what's actually going to be required or what are some measures that we will need to take just to be, just to make sure that we are looking out for the safety of our students and staff. In every call that I have been involved with ASBO or REASBO, which is our local and national board for school finance directors, the items on the left are listed as some things that we should anticipate next fall. None of this is included in the budget that we have presented right now. So the items listed were increase remediation and instruction for students who fell behind during the summer and after school, protective gear for staff and students, which may be mask and gloves, increased cost supplies as well as cleaning and sanitizing equipment for all of our seven buildings, increased health equipment and supplies for the nurse's office as well as space for the nurse's office so that should somebody come in and be identified as a potential COVID case, that we can move them to an area where the potential of having cross contamination is left, improvements in our facilities such as plexiglass for high traffic areas, including school lunch cashiers, space for nurses, I apologize, I touched on that above, and classroom areas to accommodate social distancing. Most of our classes are at a max size of 20 to 25 kids in a room. If we need to have smaller class sizes, it will require potentially additional space as well as increased staffing to man those smaller class sizes. And I also wanted to share something that came out of one of Governor Raimondo's press conferences with children. The question that came out was, what will school be like in the fall from the seventh grader in Providence? And the governor's response said, like everything else, schools will have to adjust to a new normal this fall, Raimondo said. The plan as of now is to have kids back in classrooms in September with certain restrictions and flubs. Masks might be required, changes will likely be required to lunch and breakfast schedules. Classes will likely have smaller size limits and more. So the budget we put together was to accommodate the operations as they stand. It does not include expansion of staff, expansion of supplies, expansion of space, even things such as expansion of the number of buses that we may need to run, given that our buses hold up to 78 students. So we have a lot of unknowns as of right now that we look, that we'll be facing. On the next page, I have a summary of anticipated cost reductions. So it's important to note that while we are asking for a $1.8 million increase in the town, we were required to cut $1.5 million of expenditures just to get to that number. And we also had to cope with the reduction of the state education aid. So as it stands right now in the budget you have before you, we have $458,000 of reduction of CPA contractual changes, approximately $111,000 in retirement, additional staff reductions based on class sizes and students who have aged out who may no longer need additional assistance. And then we have additional line item budget reductions throughout the budget of about 200,000, bringing us to a $1.5 million reduction in expenses to bring forward a balanced budget. The next page really highlights what the budget looks like and breaks down all of our revenue and expenditures. This is also on the website as well as the detail behind it. On the next page, we have a list of significant budget cost drivers. Again, this was before we made the $1.5 million reduction and it does not include any additional costs expected out of the COVID response. So we have a reduction in state education aid of approximately $896,000 due to a decreased state share ratio as well as a decrease enrollment in our free and reduced price lunch eligibility. On our expenditure side, again, without contract adjustments, we had increase in contractual obligations in existing staff patterns, benefit increases in health and life are the most significant, but also intention expense. Our out-of-district tuition is expected to increase as well as our transportation and even before the additional equipment that may be needed to assist with sanitizing our building, we had significant deferred purchases of equipment and furniture throughout all of our buildings. Current cost savings that have been underway, this actually started in the fall as well. We have been as proactive as we could to look at some of the high-cost areas so as to see how we can drive down some of those expenses, both for next year as well as going forward. So we will be switching our electric and gas suppliers. The budget savings will come in part next fiscal year and the balance will come in FY22, 2022. We will be rebidding our coffee machines for additional savings. We're exploring substitute staffing services. And we did lock in with a contract with a company called Reveni who have virtual net metering. So when a long-term savings, we're looking at eight to 11 million. Unfortunately, this won't really come into effect in the FY21 budget, but this is a smart, long-term move to make sure that we can lower costs as much as possible. We are investigating transportation. Again, this is before COVID, looking at added district costs to see how we can drag that down. Staffing changes, we're looking at enrollment K to 12 and adjusting our staffing pattern to meet this student enrollment at each grade. And most of the potential reductions in staff are a direct correlation to changes in enrollment. And again, we're continuing to go line item review for all of our supplies and equipment. And as Mr. Lovett said, at the very start of this budget process, all municipal school unions worked out together to discuss potential changes and the school followed through with that and the teachers came to the table and we worked out a deal that has a potential savings of $458,000 for next year. The next slide is really just a comparison of where Coventry falls in some of our surrounding communities and as well as the state with our per pupil spending. So you can see that Coventry in FY2018 had an average per pupil of 15,604. The state average was 17,355. And we also did just want to highlight historical cuts that have been made by the school district to bring forward a balanced budget every fiscal year. So in the 2021 proposed budget, we have proposed reductions of $1.5 million worth of expenditures. In FY2020, we reduced expenditures by $390,000 and in FY2019, we had to reduce staffing expenditures by $1 million. And on the last slide, just as a summary, from a local operation appropriation, we are requesting a $1.8 million increase in town appropriation. We are seeing a 1% increase in school operating budget expenditures, a 4% decrease in state education aid. And I also want to highlight that we are asking for zero in capital, knowing that we need the funds to cover operations. There is a Rhode Island general law 16-7-23 in which we are supposed to be setting aside 2% of our operating budget specifically for capital. We will not meet this requirement as it stands right now. And as such, we will not be entitled to any reimbursement of housing aid until we can demonstrate that we are properly budgeting for capital. So that is all I have for the formal presentation and then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mangiarelli, for giving that. I would at this time entertain any of the council members and ask them individually if they have any questions, any comments, and then we'll put it up to any comments from the public. So, Mr. LaBosse, I'll start out with you. Do you have any comments or questions or concerns?
No, at this time, I'd prefer to open it up to the public.
Okay, Mrs. Dixon, do you have any concerns, questions?
No, I did call Mrs. Mangiarelli last week with concerns I had and questions and we had a lengthy discussion and likewise, I would prefer to listen to the public comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Mr. Cody, do you have any questions or concerns?
Not at the present time, Mr. President, but I would like to reserve the right to questions after public comment.
Okay, we will give you an opportunity at the public room. And Mrs. Bacon, would you have any concerns, questions?
No, not at this time. I'd like to also hear from the public. Thank you.
I would also like to hear from the public. I am going to request that the public ask questions concerning the budget, not past issues, problems. Let's keep this to the budget questions into the presentation that was just given by the school so we can move it along and get as many questions and concerns as, please don't bring up anything in the past, we have to move forward. So, at this time, Mr. Manager, are there any calls, anybody from the public calling to? ask any questions?
That, that's, I'm just going to give five, ten seconds of information. There's a number down in front, if you're watching this, eight two two nine one four nine is the dial-in number for questions. The questions will come in one at a time as they ring in, they, we will answer them, just state your name and your address, as you would if you were here, and then you'll be able to ask your question, and you'll get your response from, from the school side. I must say that there was a thirty-second delay on the call, so if you're calling from home, please mute whatever you're watching this on, because it will throw you off, and it will also cause a lot of feedback. The phone lines are ready to go, where it's open, and we are just waiting to hear from anyone. Again, like I said, there's a thirty-second delay, so we've got to, we need to wait just a couple and see what's going on, see if anybody's calling in.
Okay. While we're waiting, we could possibly move on to some parts of the municipal budget while we're waiting for questions to begin.
If you'd like, I could stop with the, with, with the, the capital, capital improvement.
Would you please start doing that, that way it'll give a chance for people to stop calling and asking questions concerning schools. To your, Mr. Manager?
Yep, I am just getting the slides up, so if anybody's watching. We had, we have received our five-year request, per, per required by the, by law, by charter, and we've received them from various departments, and there are a substantial number of requests for capital improvements. As you know, there is a $200,000 capital improvement line item in our budget that, that was added in last year. Due to the fact that we have got a number of needs and the unknowns that we're facing with this, with this upcoming 2021 budget, I would prefer, if at all possible, not to earmark where that money will be spent out of the capital improvement budget. I would prefer to just have it in the budget, and when, when the need arises, whether it be town-side, school-side, if something comes up, it'll come in front of the council, and you will authorize the expenditure out of that $200,000. Mr. Gorham, is there an issue by doing that? Nick on mute.
You're right, I was on mute. I said no. Sorry.
All right, thank you. It's, it's, it's my recommended preferred way to do it. Like I said, we've got, we have got a substantial amount of, of need out there, and I'd rather, I'd like to be able to handle the need the most pressing as it occurs over the next fiscal year. And that'll be part of what you vote on at the end, at the, in the eighteenth.
I think that's a reasonable way to do it, considering the situation we're in about not being able to do many of the capital improvement projects that we want to do. So we will also entertain any questions from the public concerning the capital budget. Are there any phone calls coming in at this moment, Mr. Manager?
There are not. As I said, it's eight two two nine one four nine, the number's in front of us. If I, I'm going to, just to make sure that we don't have an issue, Mr. Horton, would you please dial the number up to make sure we're, we're getting calls coming in? I'm kind of surprised that we haven't received one. And I want to make sure that we don't have an issue.
Understood. Yeah, I want to give the public an opportunity to ask any questions or any concerns. We'll wait a few. And if they're not having any concerns, Mr. Manager, I, I think we could move right on to the municipal side budget once you determine that there is no issues with the phones.
Just, I'm, that's my, I'm dialing that in myself. So, calls are coming in. I mean, the call, the line is up, it's operational. We just have not received any calls at all at this point.
Okay. So at this point, we did go over it last night, but you want to give a recap of the public?
I will, I will do a, a similar as I did last, last night, and as well as last week. The situation is the same. Before I begin on this, I'd just like to notify everyone, we have a meeting scheduled, a conference call tomorrow, a group involving the seventeen communities that use a, a all-day referendum and/or FTM-style budget process, and we're, we're attempting to resolve some of the issues that we have on making this a more viable process, so to speak. One of the, one of the things that, that's on the agenda that we're looking at is extending for three months the current revenue, as well as levy numbers that we currently have in, in the FY nineteen twenty budget. So if we would issue, if authorized, all communities involved, if they wanted to, could issue a budget, one quarter of, of the annual budget, it has to equal one quarter of last year's, and then after that three-month timeframe would give us more time to actually get town, state numbers, to find out if there's any COVID-19 stimulus money coming, coming into the communities, municipalities, as well as the state, and any and all numbers that would be much more appropriate than what we are currently working with. We would then issue a nine-month budget minus what the, was already been collected and done, so that's, that would make things a lot easier. Again, that's on the table, we don't know where that's going, hopefully that will be something that gets resolved in the very near future. Because as my, as my program from last week and last night, it's, the big part of this is what we don't know, not as much as what we know, but how, what we don't know. And what we don't know is the revenue that we're going to receive for meal and beverage taxes, our hotel taxes, our telephone taxes. We have not been notified whether the state will continue with the motor vehicle phase-out this year, and if they do, how much even, so another main, big unknown, one of the biggest ones is school aid. No numbers are coming in, they won't come in for another month and a half or so. Again, COVID-19 assistance funds, at this point, we have no idea, we have, there's been no, no guidance coming in at this point. Our collection rate, our, our tax collection rate is critical, it's, every 1% our rate is down, that's $700,000 in additional taxes that we will not have to fund the budget. Our, our, one of the other big unknowns is the, the unemployment rate and how that's going to affect the upcoming tax collection time. Right now, we have a workforce in this state as of two months ago, workforce of about 560,000 residents in the workforce. There are currently 200,000, give or take, that are currently unemployed. That means for the month of May, April, April, excuse me, we had an approximate unemployment rate of about 35%, based on straight math. It's not for adjusted and annualized, but one-third of our, our labor force was unemployed in this past month. So what effect that's going to have on our collections and all of the others? Will the state relax some of the unfunded mandates? Another question that we've got in front of them through the league of cities and towns, what, if anything, will help, and again, assist us in our budget and our budget preparations? Will the state change, modify any of the statutory budget requirements? Again, that would be such things as the, as the levy collection time, the, giving us three months to extend, and several other things that just make, that will make life easier and, and analyzing and predicting a budget. So the question is, what do we, what do we know? And what we know right now, as of this point, our collection rate for nineteen twenty has been on par with what we've collected in the past, it's a really good sign. This week, next week are the big, big indicators, this is the final area, final timeframe for the fourth quarter collection. So this will give us a much better read on where we are, what we're doing. Need to, state revenue and aid numbers to produce a valid and accurate number. We need those numbers, we don't have them, we know we don't have them, and that's part of what we do know is what we don't know. Kind of weird, but we're in a revale year with starting tax rates in the area of about $18.80, give or take, these are not locked-in numbers yet, for residential and twenty, excuse me, twenty-two fifty-eight ballpark for the commercial. The motor vehicle is locked in at the eighteen seventy-five, the tangible is also, would be at that eighteen, eighteen fifty, eighteen eighty, somewhere in that ballpark. Hopefully, it'll stay right in there. That's based on a zero tax increase. Okay, so what have we got? Three months ago, when we started this process, we knew we had over a million dollars in increased mandatory costs that were added into the budget. Those costs were able to be effectively eliminated from the budget, let me correct that, those costs were, were remediated through the use of anticipated additional revenue from meals, taxes, collection rate increase in, in, in that area. Well, we've done the best we can, we've looked at all the numbers, we've looked at projections, and even without having solid numbers from the town, from the state, we know those numbers and those projections are long gone, they're wiped out. So we were looking at, with the budget, we were looking at an increase of over a million dollars, a million one that we needed to add the revenue from or remove those costs from the budget to keep us at a 0% projected budget increase. And the way we did that was we had reductions, excuse me, one second, we had, we went back, we looked at the budget, we took out $400,000 out of the POCS and REC budget, where we would be eliminating a couple of positions. We've eliminated all summer programs. Any program prior to September first start has been removed. Those cost savings come up and amounted to that 400,000. The fields will still be maintained. They will be available if and when leagues are allowed to start practicing and playing again. This will also allow having, having funds in that budget to do, like the Christmas time display, and, and hopefully get going and start some smaller programs with limited number of participants. The goal on this, on, on POCS and REC, with this and the forced changes that we're making, would be to make this department a more self-sustaining department, where the programs we run pay, pay for themselves and pay for the program. We're, we're eliminating over $300,000 from the police department budget. That includes, we had recently sworn in two new officers. That cost from an officer is about $80,000 for a rookie officer per year. One of the two officers decided to go to another department the next day after being sworn in. That officer will not be replaced, that saving that, that money coming out of the budget. There was a, a new K-9 unit that was in there for almost $30,000, that's been removed. Motor vehicle, replacement police vehicles, that's been removed. So there, like I said, there's over $300,000 in cuts there, there's over $300,000 in cuts out of, out of the DPW department. This manpower that won't be replaced, there are reductions in materials, there's been reductions in some of the overtime, there's been, across the board, DPW involves, I believe it's seven or eight different departments that are all under the heading of DPW. So across through those, we have reduced over $300,000. There's been also a reduction in the tax assessors office for about 60,000, over and above the, the revale numbers that had already come out of the budget. So total, we have reduced this budget by another 1.125 million dollars. So in effect, the, the operating budget is, it's effectively a zero tax rate, but we've got a million one-two-five of less operating expenditures than what we had prior to COVID-19 hitting us and decimating where we are. We're, we're looking at, as I said, a zero increase, our projected tax collection rate, we're hoping to have some numbers on that and the effect on that, and we've got some, some ideas on, 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 it won't, the budget will not be a deficit spending budget. It could conceivably be a deficit collection budget, and if that would be the case, then we're looking at some options on, on where those funds would come from. And we've got a plan, I'd rather not put it out today, but it would, we're, we're ready to go if that comes. If you look at the, the bottom numbers are, our, our original budget for 2021 was 33,321,572. We've reduced that budget down, as I said, by a 1.125 million, down to 32,226,312. Last year's FY nineteen twenty budget was 32,157,882. This, this version two municipal budget is online, it's under our finance page, and it's there if anyone wants to go and look at each and every one of the departments, the line items, all of those are listed there for everyone to find. If, if you are not prepared to ask questions tonight, anyone who wants to, if they've got questions, concerns, they can either call my office, or they can call, they can email me, both of which are on, on the website, but all you simply have to do is call Town Hall and ask for the manager, and I will be glad to answer anyone's questions that they have if they're not ready to answer, ask them tonight, this evening. With that, Mr. President, I'm available for questions from either the council or the public.
Okay, Mr. Manager, thank you very much. I just got a couple minutes. We did, you know, we're one step away from decimating the municipal side, we're down to a 0% increase, and I appreciate you working diligently to get this down. This is not what we want to do, but it's something in light of the times, you know, we happen to. I, I have a couple comments, I mean, I guess we can open up to hearing, if there are any calls from the public at this time.
You would, actually, you would be, it's on, it's available, and you would hear it ringing if it, if any come in.
Okay. Let me just make a couple comments, because we could take calls on all three topics tonight. I appreciate everything that was done on our budget with the schools, the schools did, we did meet with the schools, and they did ask, go through and renegotiate, or, you know, talk to the bargaining units to try to reduce the budget. However, this is, this was pre-COVID. I can, in good conscience, ask the taxpayers for the tax increase. Our discussions, they were pre-COVID, we would save 480,000 dollars on the first year.
Please, please stand by for one minute, please.
I can, there were some concerns for the, the next two years, that were unsustainable to the taxpayers. We don't know how long it will take the taxpayers to come out of this pandemic and financial ramifications from it. I'd love to see the CPA postpone their raises for one year, it's the real thing to do, the moral thing to do. I know it's not going to be...
Please stand by for a moment.
You got it. Mr. Manager, did you hear what we said? Mr. Manager?
Yep, it's a...
Okay. It's, I know it's not a popular thing, but we are in real climate of turmoil, and I wouldn't deny any comments from the public, if they call, and I can hear them ring, so please give your comments on it, we have some tough decisions to make, and we have to approve the budget by the eighteenth of this month, so, with that being said, I know the rest of council members wanted to give the public a chance to speak before we had any comments, I just thought it was up for me to say that, so if there are any calls to the public that you would like to refer to, Mr. Manager.
Call her on the line, could you please state your name and give your address, please?
Hi, Cheryl Smith, 103 Vassland.
Yes, ma'am.
I have concerns about the recreation department cuts to the budget. These are significant cuts of approximately $400,000, and the impact of removing two full-time people is devastating to that service that's provided for the community, it's a love service, it can be loved by the whole community. I have deep concerns that the cuts to that department are this deep. Removing two full-time people is detrimental. I understand the need to redesign the department to produce revenue, but you need full-time staff to do that. Also, summer camps are not necessary. Also, summer camps are not necessarily canceled. The community is going to need that service because parents want to get back to work. In Connecticut, the neighboring states, Connecticut is, as of yesterday, June 29th, and I assume Rhode Island without suits. So what will kids do? Where will those kids go? The ratios are going to be different, the design is different, but it's an essential service. Of recreation, when towns have cut that in the past, there's known to have increased crime rates, increased drug rates, so I think Coventry, we need to consider that. That's a devastating cost to one department, and that's their programming staff, and what I understand, I understand Parkland could probably be maintained, but who's going to be on those additional programming? So I really consider reducing that cut to that department and really thinking through that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Yep, bye-bye.
Bye now.
If you have any comments or any answers or anything to that, I'd like to answer any questions or give me comments.
Town of Coventry, please state your name and your address.
Kelly Aronika, 9 Sugar Maple Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to comment on what I heard about the teachers' contract, and I need to be clear, the president of the union and a resident, the teachers did come to the table and offer concessions, there's a half a million dollars on the table. If this council chooses to vote down the contract this evening, I'd like to know where that half a million dollars is coming from. Because what I've heard in the budget from the town side is there are cuts, but the cuts looking, that they were looking to anticipate to add to, the cuts to the schools will all be subtraction. So when you have the employees of a department, yet again, the only department willing to give that, and the town is going to say they don't want that give back, what happens to the taxpayers who don't get what they need from the school? So again, I'm going to make a comment that I made at the last school committee meeting, and the comment is simply, I have a nine-year-old son, and I do my best to teach him that when somebody gives him something that he is not entitled to, it just seems to be, "Thank you," not "May I have more."
Was the council and school committee able to hear that, the comments?
Yes.
Yes, I was.
Yes, I heard the comments. This is Anne speaking.
Yes, this is Dave Florio speaking.
Okay, go ahead. Dave, do you have something to say, a comment to answer, or?
Madam Chair, is it okay if I comment?
Yes, it's okay, Dave, feel free to say anything you'd like.
Hey, Madam Chair.
But just to, just to, as notice, the caller is hung up, or disconnected.
Okay, well, this is my comment. I know the council, I've been working with the council since 1988. The teachers, in this case, we negotiated.
Please stand by.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
We negotiated a contract in good faith with the CTA and hopefully the SRP. And again, they offered a saving of $500,000. And I find it, and the council, and we even advised the council, and some members of the council thought it was great before this. A $500,000 saving on the school budget. That's amazing, absolutely amazing. And if you don't vote this down, it's the biggest skullduggery and tomfoolery I've ever seen in my life. And I've worked with a lot of councils, and it's just ridiculous, the cut, to refuse a cut of $500,000, it's unconscionable. And we as the school committee voted unanimously to accept this contract, and the council, yes, the council has the final say, but we as the school committee, I believe, are feeling like we're being micromanaged. Because when we come up with a saving and the council decides, we're not going to accept what the school committee says, because you happen to have two lawyers, two Philadelphia lawyers, that think they can do whatever the hell they please. We have a lawyer too, we have John Anderson, and we can, and we can get other lawyers too. I know George Carullo, I know Jack Reed, I know Jim Landy, I know those guys personally because of my past involvement. However, I will not get involved with them personally. They already know, and they're already working on solutions with the town council, and I know this. It's appalling, absolutely appalling, to reject the CTA contract, and the only reason I can get is because people are being. Now, I really respect you guys, and ladies, I respect you all. However, this is absolutely, absolutely ridiculous if you reject this contract. We're saving, we're saving money, we're saving money, we're saving $500,000. That's 500,000 less that the taxpayer has to worry about. And on top of it, your responsibility is to the taxpayer, but our responsibility is to help children. And yes, you can say it's all about the kids. In this case, it is all about the kids, because we're working with diverse populations, we're working with kids that are handicapped, we're working by phone, by home visits, we're working, we're working with, we're trying to help every kid, but we can't do it. We can't do it all, because they're not in the classroom. And there are some kids falling behind, and the last thing I want to do is see our children fail in Coventry. So if I offended anybody, I apologize, but those are my feelings. And, you know, I feel like we are being micromanaged again, and that we're not good enough. That's just how I feel. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, for affording me the opportunity to comment, and thank you, Mr. President, for listening. I respect, I respect you, and I respect everybody entirely. However, I, there is no need to apologize, I understand completely, and I just don't want it to go down the tubes. So those are my comments.
No offense taken, Mr. Florio, we all have a job to do. Okay, with that, are there anybody on the phone lines that have questions or concerns, Mr. Manager?
There is, there is a current caller. Could you please state your name and your address, please?
Bradford Mayor, 360 Hope Furnace Road. I actually have one question for the school side, one for municipal.
Go ahead, sir.
For the school, on the school side, at one of the past school committee meetings, it was said that you didn't want to use any possible savings from the school buildings being closed physically for this period of time. I know there are no hard numbers yet on that, but would you use that money if it became a necessity to do so? I know it was said you didn't want to put yourselves in a further hole for next year, but if it became a necessity to do so, would you use any possible savings to offset part of your budget?
So, Mr. Wazikah, I may respond to that. I just want to be clear, what I said at the last meeting, my fear was that the budget that we put forward prior to COVID is to accommodate the operations as they currently exist. So if we take a one-time saving from this fiscal year and use it to plug a budget gap in next fiscal year, when we know that we're going to have recurring operating expenses, we will set ourselves up for a structural deficit, because we will have one year of savings that we're paying ongoing operating expenses. This happened with the American Reinvestment Recovery Act funds, many districts chose to plug budget holes, and those communities had a harder time digging out of it. So with both savings and additional funds, I would make the recommendation that those first we go, go to be, sorry, go to cover additional costs that could come in. So as an example, we will end this FY 20 with a surplus, we will have savings, we also will have loss of revenue, and I will be presenting estimates at the next school committee meeting next week, although they will be preliminary, because we still have a lot of items that we're trying to nail down. But just as an example, with the one vendor contract savings that has come up, the savings that we would incur this fiscal year, potential savings that we would incur this fiscal year, should we need to expand services next year to let, say, limit the number of students on buses next year, we would barely be able to get about 10 to 12 buses next fiscal year. So if push comes to shove, we will have no choice but to use savings this year to cover operating expenses next year, but I strongly caution the school committee and the council and the public from doing that, because we will put ourselves in a hole, because we will not be able to fund ongoing operating expenses, and we will have no funds available to cover additional expenditures that we know are coming down the pipeline, we just don't know in what aspect they're coming down. So if that didn't answer your question, I will be happy to explain a little bit further.
I understand, thank you for your time. On the municipal side, I know it's apples and oranges, but were any of the municipal side unions asked to come to the table to try to find any savings for the town?
One union, one union is currently in negotiations for their contract, so that's part of the ongoing negotiations for the contract settlement, and I am actually in discussions with the other union.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you for your questions.
All right, bye.
Mr. Manager, if I could ask you, when you do get a phone call, if you could use your phone so it doesn't ring and we don't hear it, has to talk, that would be great. Are there any other phone calls at this time?
There are not, sir, we're waiting, I don't know how long you'd like to wait.
Okay, well, I want to wait too long, I want to give the council an opportunity to ask some questions, I mean, they've heard a few, unfortunately, I wish it was more people from the public that were making calls, but I'm going to give anybody from the council rather to go through, is there anybody from the council who would like to ask any questions of any department heads, the schools, anything that was on the agenda for this evening? Let me just start, let me do, let me start out with Mr. LaBossa there.
No, I have no questions at this time, I don't, Mr. Cody and Mrs. Dixon were holding off for questions, let's acquiesce to them.
Okay, thank you. Dixon, do you have any questions or concerns concerning this evening?
Please hold.
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. President. I have been watching the school committee meetings, I read the school budget, I've spoken to the finance director about the budget, and I got many, many questions answered. I do believe that at least 70% of the budget is based on staffing and associated benefits, and this relates directly to the CTA contract really under consideration tonight, we can discuss that at that time. The school presentation, this is Manager Ellie, thank you, is quite clear concerning unanticipated costs associated with COVID-19, plus the needs that the school committee has presented. I am very surprised by the reduction in state aid based on the share ratio in the employment, enrollment, free and reduced price lunch eligibility, as I believe that we have approximately over 30% of our students on free and reduced lunch. So my first question is this, just exactly what is the reduction that we have based on the student population?
So our overall free and reduced price lunch population did go down by about 100 students. This is something that we're working with, with data management, we have sent out requests throughout the entire fiscal year encouraging parents to apply, they can apply at the beginning of the year, throughout the year, should their financial status change. We would expect that as of right now, we will have an increase in those numbers. Unfortunately, those won't be factored in until the FY 2022 aid, unless something changes from the state that allows us to submit one final student enrollment calculation. We need to keep in mind that thresholds do change every fiscal year. We also have to make sure that we are capturing all students from preschool or kindergarten who may register or complete an application in the spring, and thinking that that is the only time that they need to do it. Unfortunately, we need to have them resubmit in July. So these are some of the areas that we've been focusing on to try and capture that. But really, throughout the, almost the entire start of the fall, we saw less applications coming in, and we truly are not sure why. We're handing them out at the grab and go site, we've emailed them out, they've gone home in paper packets, we will do bulk mailings next year for them, but unfortunately, we can only capture as many students whose families submit those free and reduced price lunch applications. And that, and that did have a significant impact on our final aid numbers. All along, we were projecting a decrease in state education aid, but that last significant increase from the October to the final projected numbers was really the change in free and reduced price lunch applications.
So this is based on a reduction of 100 students, which in overall doesn't seem like a lot, but it seems to have had a significant impact in the amount of state aid that you are getting. So I hope that you all will continue your strong efforts and robust efforts to try to get in those students who do qualify, so that you can see an increase in your state aid. The second question, I had Mr. Mayor already asked the question, it was about the savings from the school closings, not running the buses, et cetera, but I believe that you did give an adequate explanation for that question that was asked. So I have no more questions, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Congresswoman Dixon, the next question is.
Mr. President, there is a caller on the line, if you'd like to bring these back and forth.
Yes, please do.
All right. Caller, could you please mute the, what you're listening to and state your name and address, please? Caller, one more time, would you please mute that and state your name and address, please?
Yes, hello, this is Mary Vanderbilt, Seven Whiteman, Coventry.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for calling.
I'm just a little concerned that over and over again, we seem to go through the same history, and it's getting a little annoying. For years now, the Coventry teachers have been the sole, sole group in this town that has constantly opened up contracts, given back money, salaries, given back benefits, increased co-pay, and done it again and again. Yet, in this pandemic situation, in one week's time, this district mobilized themselves into virtual learning, getting out lectures and practices to students, remaining in contact with families, finding any services we can, even going ourselves to deliver children's lunches to them or classes. We have done, and done more than most other districts in Rhode Island. And yet, this is how it looks at? We've given back again, $500,000 in money to the town, and yet, it's not enough? You want more? I don't understand what the purposes of looking at something, at a group who's willing to give back and saying, "We want more." It appears that perhaps those people have these certain agendas, and they're willing to drive speeches to the world, to make their agenda, to make a point, I don't know, but I'm really tired of seeing this constant, this history repeating itself. And I understand that someone has hired attorneys to look into contracts and negotiate, or whatever it was. That's, you know, pretty much the first that I've heard about this, but if that's the case, I'd like to know which town council members approved of that, and what are supposed to be attorneys, and who are these attorneys, and are they the ones that are holding up perhaps any of this? Mr. Florio, who mentioned that to, to my committee? So I'm just wondering, is that's what's happening? You already have Mr. Glom there, who's supposed to be your town solicitor to do those jobs. So I'm not sure where we're going, but I do know that we have given back, and I can't imagine. And I can't imagine how you're going to look at the taxpayers and say, "Yeah, teachers gave back, but we still said no," even though after everything that's going on, and look them in the face and say, "This is our community. Be proud of it. I did a great job." If that's how you feel on the town council, then I think there's an issue going on here. I think you need to real look at this thing and say to yourself, "You know what? They negotiated this phase. Once again, they came up with a resolution to save this town a lot, and I think we should take this."
Thank you. I will just say that, uh, Mr. Regasta is an assistant solicitor for the town. He is not, uh, a separately hired hand. Mr. President?
And may I add too, that it is normal procedure to have any contract looked over by our labor attorney before any decisions made or we take advice from our attorney. So it is normal procedure. It's not something that was just done on this particular time. Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other calls, Mr. Manager?
Ma'am, thank you very much.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, at this point, we're, uh, we're still waiting to see if we've got any others so we could move on with the council members and then, uh, to the school committee members if you'd like, so they could ask, uh, questions as well.
All right, let me move on to, uh, Mr. Cody. Do you have any questions, any concerns?
Well, I do, and I would like to address, uh, a couple of different things. First of all, I know that the school department, as well as the CTA, negotiated this new contract in good faith. I have no doubt in my mind. They are all people of integrity. I know the negotiating team for the CTA. I know the school department. They are people of integrity. They are people that serve this town tirelessly. I understand that. Mr. Florio, I have to tell you that the town of Coventry is not in the habit of hiring shysters as lawyers or fly-by-night attorneys, um, per your, your earlier statement. And I, sir, believe me, take no personal disrespect or anything from anything that you said, because I will never take anything personally that takes place in a political arena. And I hope you don't either. But when the labor attorney that is employed on a regular basis by the town of Coventry, we didn't bring in a special attorney for this case, advises that the only savings in the new contract is in the first year, and yes, I acknowledge there is a five hundred thousand dollar savings in the first year, and that is great. But if that three-year contract is not sustainable by the taxpayers for the entire term of the contract, that five hundred thousand dollar savings in the first year is going to amount to only one year. The second year is going to require more. The third year, which I know there is a clause in the contract that we both know exists that could take care of the third year. All the attorney told us was that it does not seem with the numbers that come out of that contract that it is sustainable for three years. And that's what the council has to think about, not just one year. I, I wish we could just go on one year, but unfortunately, we can't. We have thirty-three percent unemployment in the town of Coventry. I'm going to assume it transfers from the state level to the town of Coventry at thirty-three percent. We have made draconian cuts to the municipal side. And I'm not asking for more from the school side. As far as the teachers' contract is concerned, if it indeed gets voted down tonight, when that comes up on the agenda, they still have a year of their existing contract. We're not asking them to work without a contract. I don't want anybody to misunderstand that. We're not asking them to work without a contract. I appreciate the fact that they came back to the table. I think it says a lot about them, about the respect that they have for the town of Coventry and the taxpayers in the town of Coventry. I really do. But this council has to think about the entirety of that contract. And when a man that I think is a great labor attorney advises us that, of his opinion, then I think it behooves this council to take his opinion into consideration before we make a vote that's going to affect the taxpayers in the town of Coventry for the next three years. I wish it was just one year, David, but it's not. It's the entire life of the contract that we have to look at. So I, I, I mean, I, I understand what you said, and I know you're passionate about the taxpayers that you serve in the town of Coventry, and I respect that. But you have to respect the position that the council's into, please.
Mr. President, it's Sarah Mangrielli. If I may, please take a moment to respond to Mr. Cody.
Yes, please do, Mr. Mangrielli.
Thank you. I just, um, with all due respect, I, I do disagree, um, with the town solicitor to say that the only savings is in year one. I think that that is actually misleading. Um, I think that there were structural changes that were made in the benefit plan design as well as the leave time that's included in the contract that will actually have potentially greater savings as some of our teachers who are on top step and looking, uh, to retire in the next few years retire and we have new, younger steps come in, because the intent was to generate savings next fiscal year and also make some structural changes in the benefit plans as well as the salaries to have long-term impact. So I, I do disagree with that num, with that, uh, sentiment from the attorney, and, and I'm sure he's great with the attorney, but I, I think I have a pretty good handle on the numbers and what that contract also looks like. Um, I think too, by reducing or by, by freezing a step in year one, that has ongoing impact. So if you don't freeze on step one, everybody's base is going to be higher next year and we will be paying salaries on that next year. So I, I think that this does need to be looked at, uh, a little bit more thoroughly from a financial perspective, because I, I really think that you're being, uh, slightly moved astray from, from the actual potential that this contract has.
Mr. President, uh, Luke Murray, may I also comment on Mr. Cody's?
Please do, Luke Murray.
Um, so, Mr. Cody, I appreciate your comments, and, and again, I'll, I'll also, um, kind of jump off what Sarah just said, is that, um, I had my own reservations on any sort of contract negotiations coming in and what that would produce. As all of you know, last year was a very tumultuous year, and we started off that year as a committee requesting that we go back and try to, you know, we do have a responsibility to taxpayers, and I will disagree with my fellow member Florio in that while we have a responsibility to deliver a high-quality education, we do also have a responsibility to the entire community, and that includes providing the best product at the best possible cost. And so, and I believe in that. And we've shown this year through striking a virtual net metering contract, through renegotiating gas, renegotiating electric, and going back to our union in good faith and renegotiating this, that we, and my mandate as a men, committee member was, "Show me the math." And Sarah has shown me the math, and she has identified how this structurally would, would provide savings over the term of the contract. If we play this yellow brick road out, the, as you stated, the teachers do not have to come to the table this year. So let's look at next year. What is the benefit for the teachers' union to then come back and offer up savings? We could be in a much worse bargaining position, especially with recent statutory law that has been passed, to renegotiate our contract. Right now, we've been negotiating good faith. That faith is likely lost if this contract does not go through. Is it the perfect contract? No, it is not. Does it save everything I would even like? Probably not. But both sides, I've said it over and over again, walk away from the table with a little less than they went in with. And to me, that is a fair contract. But if we do not ratify this contract and we do not shore up our structural situation on the budget, which was already bad before the COVID crisis, then we are setting ourselves up for an ongoing structural deficit, which will not be made up next year or the next five years. And we've been making positive changes in the direction this year to structurally sure not only the school side, but I think there's a ripple effect that will help the municipal side. What I'm, I'm not convinced is, we, we talk about having to do a zero percent, and I understand what you're saying about the current rate of unemployment. But we've gone through these peaks and valleys before, and what has been consistent is, we cut the budget to bare bones, we put ourselves in a very bad structural position for following years, and then we scratch our head wondering why we're in such a bad position. If we were to stay the course and provide small incremental increases year over year, we wouldn't have this yin yang effect that is going on. So for our side of the fence, and I'm only speaking of schools right now, we really need to stay on this path with a responsible, math-based budget that we're presenting to make this work. If we don't believe in the math and we in a way or another just cut money, then we're going to be in a very bad situation, not only this year, but years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murray. Mr. Cody, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm all set, President. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this time I would like to go to, uh, Mr. Bacon. If you have any comments or questions concerning the three items that were on the agenda this evening?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other, uh, questions, uh, from the public?
At this time, we have no, no calls coming in, sir.
Okay, I guess, uh, if we give the opportunity for anybody else at the school who would like to make a comment, any school committee members, before we close public hearing. Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm just gonna just ask everyone on the committee, um, and I'll just, um, ask them to, if they have any questions, just like you did with the town council members. So starting with Mr. Pearson, um, do you have any, uh, comments, um, concerns that you'd like to share with the public?
Um, just that, I hope the economy ramps up pretty soon, because these cuts are across the board are, are, are pretty, um, devastating as, I'm not even sure if I'm gonna have a word, so. We need to start, instead of hoping for the best, planning for, uh, the future, uh, the best we can. So I, I hope to see some very, very particular and very specific action items coming out of, out of our budget discussions over the coming months. And that is all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, Mrs. Kalunian, did you have any comments to make?
No, I just want to, um, reiterate what, uh, Luke and Mr. Florio said, that, you know, we did, uh, negotiate this contract in good faith. Sarah did show the math and, you know, we did the best that we could and we saved money when we said we would, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Um, Mr. Murray, did you have anything further?
Uh, I said a lot of what I was already gonna say, but, um, I'll just reiterate that we have really tried as a committee to make the cuts that we felt were prudent, and that includes looking across the board at all our expenses. And that has been a resounding theme for the year. We knew that we couldn't sustain year over year of layoffs and, and parents making, quite frankly, the decision to move out of district, which has a ripple effect that just cost us more money. So we went into this, I thought, in a very honest, supportive situation. Um, I'm hoping that continues, and I speak to this not only as I'm a resident like all of you, but I'm also a parent of two who are in the school system that've seen the extraordinary, um, work that has been put in firsthand. I am a working parent. My wife is too. If we did not have the support of this school system, and I will say even moving forward as a, as a resident, the park system, um, it's becoming very difficult as a parent. And one of the benefits of living in a nice residential community are the services, like a good school system.
Can you please stand by until they're ready to hear the question, please?
If we do not have that, then we might as well just move to any other community that just wants to slash and burn.
Can you please stand by until they're ready to answer your questions?
I urge you to really make a math-based decision, and if you're unsure of this CTA contract, if you're unsure at this point if your lawyer is the accounting expert that you're making that decision, I urge you not to proceed tonight, because I think that you want to speak further with Sarah and get some more information before you make this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, and finally, Mr. Florio, did you have any, any last comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't know how many people are watching this meeting, but I've heard nobody speak against the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year school, school apartment budget. That tells me, Madam Chair, that there is a lot of support in the community for the school department and the fact that people want their teachers, they want their kids in the classroom with their teachers, they're sick of layoffs, and they do not, do not want to see any more cuts in the school system. Like Mrs. Leva said, we're going to need, we're going to need some more personnel to make sure our kids are safe when school begins. I don't want to be accountable for any child getting the COVID vi, virus, because we decided we were gonna pinch pennies and not give the taxpayers an increase over a pizza, over the cost of, over the cost of a pizza. So anyways, Madam Chair, that's my comment, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Um, I just like, my final, uh, comment, um, would be that I also agree with my committee that, um, the teachers came to the table, um, they did bargain in good faith. Um, I cannot imagine the town council not approving this contract. Um, obviously, we don't have any crystal ball to figure out what the revenue stream is gonna look like for my taxpayers. But one thing we do know is that this contract will save us money next year. Um, there's, there's just no way to argue your way out of that. And, um, I, 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 I am, I feel very unfortunate that the labor attorney on your side, um, led you to believe that this was not something that should be approved, if that in fact is true, and that is gonna happen tonight. I, I think that's, um, very short-sighted on your part not to go ahead and approve the contract, um, and see, I, I, this is the first I've heard, actually, uh, when the manager said that they're, they're asking maybe to, um, prolong this, the season to see what the revenue stream or what revenues will come into the town. I'm not sure if the, if the state will agree to that or not, but one, one way or the other, it's a simple fact, the contract will cost us less next year if you go forward with it. And the structural, um, differences, um, in the contract language, it'll save you in the long run in the future as well. I think, um, our budget director was very clear in explaining that to us, and, um, I just, I just hope that the town council will be clear to approve this contract tonight. Um, but like Mr. Florio said, um, I have only heard praise from the community for our teachers and the efforts that have been made during this COVID crisis. Um, I think without our schools being part of this community and the reach out to all of our students, um, we'd be in, uh, uh, I, I think that, that our kids would really be left in the, in the dirt, quite honestly. None of them have been left behind. They've all been serviced one way or the other because of the dedication of our teachers. And personally, if, if this contract is not approved, I truly believe it's a slap in the face to our teachers. And considering what they've been going through, what the administration has been going through, what we've all been going through, I think we need to stay united as a community and, and say, yes, you know, they did their best, they came to the table, they did everything that was asked of them. And to not approve this contract will be something that I will have real trouble, um, accepting. Um, that's all I have to say. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Manager, are there any other questions coming from the public?
We have a caller on the line. If you're ready, I will, uh, ask her to state her name.
Yeah, all right.
Ma'am, could you state your name and your address, please?
Yes, my name is Diane Cowell. My address is ninety-seven Mohawk Street here in Coventry. I'm calling in support of this contract because I left Coventry a year and a half ago. I retired from being a school nurse. I've left retirement and I'm currently working at the Rhode Island Department of Health. This COVID is drastically going to change our world for a very long time. It's not short-term. for a very long time. It's not short-term. With the contracts giving us a decrease for this first year, I think you need to take it and we need to wait and see what's gonna happen with everything else because there is just many, many changes coming ahead. So to have something on the table that you know and that is concrete in terms of the contract will give you a secure foundation for where to go into the future.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Manager, is there anybody else on the line at this time?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, well, we have taken all the comments into consideration. I certainly, I think the motion to close public hearing is in order.
Gary Cody, I make a motion we close public hearing as long as there's no more phone calls from the public.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Ann Dixon, second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clark, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Kerry McGee.
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here.
Hi.
Deborah Bacon.
Yes.
Ian Dixon.
One point.
Gary Cody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, here we are. We're all in favor. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, Madam Clark, the item on the agenda is C1. Would you please read that off for us?
Mr. President, does the school committee want to close out their meeting or do they want to continue in?
This is Madam Chair. Would you like to close out your meeting or do you want to continue with the rest?
We can close our meeting. That'd be fine. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to close our meeting? I have seven twenty-eight.
Madam Chair, make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at seven twenty-eight PM.
I second. Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnod.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colunian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries, five to zero. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Clark, the next item on the agenda is C1. Would you be so kind as to read that, please?
Ratification of Coventry Teachers Alliance CTA Collective Bargaining Agreement for a Three-Year Contract.
Okay, Mr. Manager, before we open up to any council members that have any questions, do you have any comments or any concerns on that before we move on?
I do not, sir.
Okay, we're gonna open up questions and concerns to the council members. Let me just state that this was on the agenda on our last council meeting and it was tabled and because there were some concerns about it not being the correct contract voted on by the school committee. However, to the best of my knowledge, which was a little upsetting that it was not put on the school committee agenda the following meeting to correct anything that was not, you know, not complete. So anyway, we have had a chance to look at this and we've heard some comments tonight, but I'm gonna open up to each council member the opportunity to ask any questions or say any concerns before we take a vote. So, excuse me, I'm gonna start out with Mr. LaBosse here. Mr. President LaBosse here, it's all yours.
Okay, I wanna make a call. I was kinda surprised to see it come back tonight because there had been no changes or anything regarding the concerns that we had in executive session and on public session. So I really have no other questions.
The number of participants in the conference is?
Twenty-two.
The following participants are in the conference.
Ed.
Bob Robalart.
Donna McDonald.
Nick Gorham.
Deborah Bacon.
Kevin McGee.
Kerry McGee.
Rick Heis.
Reno Blumusaw.
David Florio.
Monique Cool.
Donna Colunian.
Russell Crossman.
James Pearson.
Ann Dixon.
Megan Whedon.
Gary Cody.
Greg LaBosse here.
Kathy Patnod.
Kerry Martini.
Laurie Andrews.
Laurie Anderson.
President LaBosse here, I'm gonna move over to Mrs. Dixon, Councilwoman Dixon. Do you have any comments, concerns concerning this item on the agenda?
I do have some comments and concerns, but I would like to wait until I hear the other council people speak, please.
Okay, so let me move on to Mr. Cody then. Would you have any questions, comments, or concerns concerning this item?
No, I think I've said everything I needed to say.
Okay, well, I will move on to Councilwoman Bacon. Do you have any questions, concerns concerning this item on the agenda?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I do. Which contract are we voting on? We have two versions. We have one that is the original version that's dated 3/12/2020. And then we have another version that came as a, I don't even like, a corrected version. And so which one is coming before us? The one that the school committee voted on was a draft form and none corrections were made. And the one that with the corrections were made, that was not ratified by the school, I mean, by the union or by the school committee. So concerned, which one are we voting on tonight? What are we supposed to be looking at?
My understanding is we are voting on the final draft one and I did notice to the change myself that it did not appear on the school committee agenda, all of our questions on the last meeting. So that will be the one we are voting on this evening.
So we're voting on a final draft that has not been voted on by the labor, by the CTA, nor by the school committee. So we're voting on a contract that has not been approved by school committee or by the teachers, correct?
That is correct.
Then how do we vote?
You have the right to vote and whatever you feel. If you're not feeling comfortable with it, then you vote accordingly. This is okay.
Okay, so I guess folks need to understand that. And, okay, so we're voting on something that has never been approved by the teachers nor by the school committee. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns, Ms. Bacon?
Sorry, I muted. No, not at this time.
Okay, so.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Cody, go ahead.
Okay, I was kinda sitting back to see if somebody was gonna bring it up and it has been brought up. The contract that was ratified by the teachers and by the school committee is not the one that we are voting on tonight, correct?
The one that was presented to us at our last meeting, though my understanding it would never appear in front of the school committee again and is the one we're voting on. Mr. Manager, correct me if I'm wrong.
The one that you have from the last meeting when you tabled it, you obviously have to have the same contract that you had for that period, correct? That is the one you tabled last time, which is the most updated contract.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
The one, if I may, the one that we tabled, the one that we tabled, the one that we're voting on tonight, was that ratified by the teachers' union and the school committee? That, see, questions like this is why I kinda wished that the school committee would've stayed on because I'm completely confused by what we're voting on. Because I know there was two separate copies of the contract. There was a draft and then there was a final. I need to know which one we're voting on tonight and which one was ratified by the school committee and by the CTA.
Mr. President, may I speak?
Yes, Mrs. Dixon, go ahead.
The first version that we received, which we did not really discuss, was one that did not have the statement in it about the agreement to open the contract after two years. We then received another version that had a statement inserted in the agreement section that said the contract could be opened after two years if either the school committee or the union asked for it to be opened. Now, we did ask the question as to whether the school committee had approved the version with the agreement section changed. And what I was able to determine was that apparently they had discussed it in executive session and in the town, in the financial impact statement which we received, they did have what they put in under year three, reopener clause. However, that was not, even though it was in reopener clause, was in the impact statement, it was not the version that was officially approved during an open school committee meeting. In addition to that, it appears that the union version did not have that statement in it about the reopener. So the version that we really need to approve, I would say, because we have questions, is the first one we received that does not have the reopener clause in it.
Mr. President, I don't, I'm just gonna throw this out there. Because of the confusion that exists around two copies of the contract, or two different versions, I don't wanna say two copies, two different versions of the contract, is there a flavor from the council to table this and allow the school committee and the CTA to get a straight copy that has been ratified by both of those entities, sent over to the council before our next meeting and put this on for a vote of the council at the next meeting? So there's no confusion about what we're voting on, sir?
I have absolutely no problem with that because it is still some confusion and I was hoping that it would've been discussed and presented to us in a different way and it wasn't. So I'm open, if somebody wants to present that, I'm open to that.
I would like to make a motion that we table this action until our next meeting and have the town manager, on behalf of the council, contact the chairwoman of the school committee and see if we can get this straightened out before our meeting next week, please. I make a motion we table it.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
LaBosse here will second that.
We have a second. All in favor, Madam Clark, roll call vote, please.
Kerry McGee.
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here.
Yes.
Deborah Bacon.
Yes.
Ian Dixon.
Yes.
Gary Cody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carrie is right at his table at this time. And Mr. Manager, you will have a discussion with the Madam Chair and the school committee and the school superintendent and see if we can get this lined out. I have real mixed emotions on the whole thing. I think the CTA bargained in good faith. I just wanted to clarify. So everything.
I will.
We'll address that and speak to them and then possibly our next meeting, we can get to the bottom of this.
I will contact both first thing tomorrow morning and I will get back to the council.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Dixon.
Okay, thank you very much. I do think, I was prepared to speak about the contract this evening, but based on the discussion, I approve of tabling it so there can be one version that comes to us that has been approved by both the union and the school committee. I would also like to mention that the copy of the contract that we received, version one, on the signature page in my copy, only had the school committee's signatures on it. There was no signatures by the union on it at all. So I would like to have back the final copy with any corrections, typographical errors that need to be corrected, but I would like to see the signatures of both parties on that particular contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Dixon. I also would encourage any council member, if they still have any questions, once we discuss, you speak to Mr. Manager Riley and go over there and make sure the math is, you know, you're comfortable with it before any decisions are being made. Mr. Manager, if you'll handle that tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. With that being said, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn, Gary Cody.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Ann Dixon.
Okay, Ann Dixon has a second. All in favor, Madam Clark, roll call vote, please.
Kerry McGee.
Yes.
Greg LaBosse here.
Yes.
Deborah Bacon.
Yes.
Ian Dixon.
Yes.
Gary Cody.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much and stay safe, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.